The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Farmington Town Council meeting and ask you to join us with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
And we're actually going to begin tonight with the Stephen Fliss Scholarship. CJ?
(inaudible) Do you want to come up? I want you to be as uncomfortable as possible so you get to stand up during the entire reading. I've had the privilege of being on the Fliss Scholarship Committee a few different times, and every once in a while you have an applicant who stands out, and often for different reasons. And I think one of the reasons here was the long-term dedication. And reading the essay, I learned that comes honestly. He comes from a family of firefighters. I've met his parents, grandparents, a little earlier. So he's been very involved, and that's one of the things I'll read off in a minute, for his years all throughout high school, being involved in the fire department. So, with no further ado, this is a resolution of commendation. Whereas, the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship was established in 1985 and dedicated to Stephen A. Fliss, who served as town manager of the Town of Farmington to 1955 to 1985. Whereas, the scholarship was established for Farmington residents seeking a college degree in public administration and/or public service. And whereas, Joseph Call of Farmington submitted his application to the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship Committee. And whereas, the Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship Committee unanimously chose Joseph Call's application, and he has approved a scholarship award of $500. And whereas, Joseph has been a Town of Farmington Fire Cadet all four years of high school. He has expanded his knowledge and leadership abilities with introduction to the fire service and advanced skills and concepts at the Connecticut Fire Academy. He volunteered at the Town of Farmington Fire Department Car Show for the past three years. He has volunteered at Fill the Boot for Muscular Dystrophy with the West Hartford Fire Department Association. Volunteered for the Firefighters Grill with the West Hartford Firefighters Association. And whereas, Joseph Call will be attending Gateway Community College in New Haven, Connecticut, where he can continue his dedication to public service by pursuing studies in automotive tech and firefighting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council commends Joseph Call on his scholarship award and hereby encourages his continued success and his future studies. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 14th day of May 2019. Nancy W. Nickerson, Farmington Town Council Chair.
(applause)
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. This is really a fun night. I mean, now, these are the kinds of things at the council that we so enjoy. The scholarships that are given like that for high school students. And also tonight recognizing, we're very proud to be able to recognize the Farmington High School basketball team, the boys' basketball team, for winning the state championship. First time, state championship, and you now have a banner upright in the gym of the basketball team, the state championship. So congratulations, and we're honored to have you here tonight. I went back and did a little research. I looked back in December to see what was being talked about for the boys' basketball team, what you, some things in the newspaper, your newspaper. And the comment, a couple of comments were that this year, the team has adopted a new slogan. And Coach Witter hopes to build a program that emphasizes the culture, team culture, and chemistry. Coach Witter said, "The boys' basketball team's slogan this season is 'Culture Matters.' Our number-one goal is to build our team culture so that we play well together and make the most of our season. We believe that if we have a strong culture, we can achieve more." I think that culture was achieved in that togetherness, certainly, by your championship. Another comment in that article came from sophomore Mo Ma. Excuse me for saying that wrong. His quote was, "We are extremely focused and excited for the season and ultimately want to bring a state championship to Farmington." That was December 2018, and look what happened. So clearly, you were energized and motivated from the beginning. I want to congratulate all of you on the team. One of the things I heard, and as this was in, as it progressed, as you won more and more games, was that this team was a very, a team that really worked together. A team of wonderful young men that really worked together to achieve the goal. And that certainly comes from a lot of talent, which you all have, but it also comes from the working together and pulling together from the coaches that you have. Pulling the best out of you to get what you've accomplished, that championship in the end. And your coach, Dwayne Witter, who's been here for a number of years as a phys ed teacher and a coach here at the high school, and who's well-respected and was able to pull that together. And I know when I was watching the Board of Ed night, there are a lot of you that are not seniors, and I see that that's going to be, so we're looking forward to the next few years, I'm sure, of the possibility of you coming back here again. But your achievement this year is absolutely wonderful, and the fact that you work together. Also, we should be thinking about the community and your parents, your parents that stood behind you and that gave you that beginning with the basketball and with just the idea of dedication, commitment, and working hard, which I know you all have had to do to achieve this goal and be where you are today.
(laughing) Good hand.
One of the other things that I wanted to mention that just brings about this idea of community, and community in Farmington is, and how you hold that dear, is I heard that when you won, and many times they, as you all can think of games or concerts and things you're at, at the end, all of a sudden, the orders, the barricades are up, and they don't want anyone coming on this, coming down into the court. But what I understand was that you went out into the, into your stands and went out to see the people that were there supporting you, went out to see your fans and talk to them. And one of the things that, one of the Mohegan Fellas that was working there said they'd never seen that before, being part of your community. And that says so much for your community and for you as young men and people that worked so hard to achieve this goal. And I just, I know that, I would like to ask Jack Phelan to come up and say a few words, too, but I just couldn't be prouder, you should all be so proud of yourselves and your community, your parents, and just an amazing achievement, and so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm really going to ask Coach Witter to come on up. Come on up, Coach Witter, because you're the one that really needs to get an opportunity to talk. On behalf of Farmington High School and Farmington Athletics, we just want to thank you so much. This coaching staff with Coach Witter, Coach O'Connor, Coach Monjul, my Santa right coach, and Coach Daddio, just amazing coaches, and these young men just did an amazing job. Their families, the Booster Club, their schoolmates, the faculty and staff, and then the community. Just an amazing, amazing ride that you took us on, and we can't thank you enough. But really, Coach Witter was the leader in this, and he's the one that deserves to be up here. Thanks.
You're welcome. Good morning. Thank you.
I am very proud to live in Farmington. I'm very proud to teach in Farmington. I'm very proud to coach basketball in Farmington. And I've told this story several times now, but my goal for the basketball program was never to win a state championship. That wasn't necessarily the goal. The goal was to get to that game that would bring our community together. And certainly, we got to that game, and the community did not disappoint. They showed up and actually were a big part of helping us to achieve this goal. So, very happy to be here tonight. I'm proud to be here tonight. I love these boys. I tell people that, that, you know, every coach rags about their team and their boys, but our boys are better. This is a great group with high character. People were concerned at halftime of the state championship game because we were losing by nine points. I was not concerned. I thought that this team had the character to come back in the second half and win the game. So, thanks, thank you all for listening to me talk about this, but thank you to the Town Council for having us here tonight. We are humbled, as you can tell, but very honored as well.
And if you could all say that, just do one of the propretations. Please. Coach Witter. Whereas, in 2019, the Farmington High School Boys Basketball Team, also known as the Farmington Indians, finished the season with an overall record of 21-3, winning the Division III Basketball Championship. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Dwayne Witter and assistant coaches Tim O'Connor, Jeff Daddio, Scan Mongili, and athletic director Jack Phelan, the team competed in the finals at the Mohegan Sun Arena against Amistad Academy of New Haven, overcoming a nine-point halftime deficit to outscore its opponent 39-20 in the second half en route to the 55-45 victory. Whereas, the Farmington High School Boys Basketball Team won their first-ever state championship in their first championship game since 1939, and were named this year's Central Connecticut Conference Patriot West Division Champions. And whereas, the Farmington Town Council recognizes Town of Farmington Boys Basketball Varsity Team members Timothy Arnold, Nico Bazaskis, Jake Brackner, Tyler Cortland, Nick Duncan, Jacob Dunst, Tristan Grand, Mahi Hawkins, Grayson Air, Ube Mo Ma, Ricky Podarsky, Jake Shadler, Jacob Smith, Clark Strauss, and Jeffrey Stululak. Was the, for the accomplishments they demonstrated over the past several months and for their hard work, dedication, perseverance, and love of the sport of basketball, now therefore be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council, in recognition of the accomplishment of the Farmington High School Boys Basketball Team, hereby proclaim May 14, 2019, as Farmington High School Boys Basketball Team Day, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 14th day of May 2019. Nancy Nickerson, Town Chair. (applause) Oh, wow. Wow. And we have a picture for us to put up on our wall. Thank you very much.
Coach, if you don't want to get your team up here, usually you get a better view. You get everybody standing right up here.
With a picture, yes.
With the whole thing picture.
Are they going to black us? Okay.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Even if we were seated on the stage, we're probably going to say, "Oh, Bruce."
Keep your hands down.
Take a picture.
No photo.
Put one on the hat.
Oh, boy.
Never worn a hat in my life.
Does everyone have one?
I don't look like a hat. Never worn a hat, ever.
Thank you.
Oh, this is awesome. Everyone enjoy it. Yeah, I'm never wearing a hat again.
(applause)
Stop standing, you're painting.
(laughing)
I'm not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll reconvene. Any new items? And now, public comment. If anyone would like to come up and address the council, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. Okay. Reading of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve April 1st, 2019, regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second. Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Communications.
You just see in the packet that I am continuing to correspond with our legislative group about the teachers' pensions.
Okay, report of committees. The Yukon Health Committee, we have a meeting on June 7th. Land Acquisition.
Land Acquisition, met last week. We are continuing to explore parcels for acquisition by the town, and we do have executive session later today to discuss that further. Our next meeting is Thursday, June 13th, at 5:00 p.m.
Green Efforts.
Green Efforts Committee, met last week. The focus of our meeting was the townwide cleanup that had occurred on April 20, Saturday, April 27, 28. And the town collected over 2,000 tons of trash from the sides of the road, and people have remarked that the roads, that the town does look cleaner as a result, which is good. It was slightly low, it was lower than prior years, but we're hopeful that means maybe there was less trash on this outside to be picked up. It was also, the weather was not the best day. It was cold and windy and threatened rain most of the day, but we had a good support of volunteers. And a number of organizations that participated, including Boy Scout Troop 170, the Farmington Democrats, and EBM Pabst was our business winner with over 700 tons of trash collected by the one business. And I can't remember the family, they had 400 pounds, the one family, the Nelson family?
Nelson, yeah.
So, we had some really, we had some high totals from individuals, and it was a good day. And we are continuing to explore ways for the town to reduce waste production, especially in light of potential state mandates to reduce, for municipalities to reduce waste, and we're trying to find cost-effective ways to do that and encourage residents to decrease the amount of waste that they produce. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June 4th, at 7, at 6:30 p.m. in this room.
And I just want to say how nice the brochure was.
Oh, thank you.
Thought that was very nice.
Yeah, great. Thank you to Erica and Kat and the rest of the town manager staff for working on that for us, because it came out really nice.
Okay. Farmington Center Committee.
Yeah, so the Farmington Village Center Committee, they had a lot going on the last couple of weeks, and I know that Kathy Belansky and yourself, Nancy, attended a testimony at the State Capitol on the bill, which I will ask Kathy if she wants to add any additional comments to that, but the information is in our packet. As well as, the Quality of Life Committee had met to review some of the priorities and to start working on a plan with the consultants to move forward for the council to vote on. And I believe we're also getting some quotes on some crosswalks within the center. Kathy, I'm not sure if you want to add any additional commentary that's...
Yeah, just quickly, is that we are hopeful that our bill at the conveyance will be, will know at the, at the end of the budget season. It was, we did have our support of our full legislative group, so that was nice to see that. They were all there for us, and Nancy and I, and Bruce was involved, and we testified, and we felt that it went pretty well. And we also did, which I think is helpful in the future, we did what we call as our one pager, which is in here, just we gave that out in explaining the importance of it, and that seemed to be well-received also. Our bid did go out for our crosswalks and stamp concrete, and that they will be coming in at the end of the month, and we hope to be bringing some items to the council at the June meeting regarding that.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, good. Report of the council chair and liaisons. I just wanted to, just, we're going to, I went to a CROG meeting, and the budget, we talked about budget, and also a regional meeting in the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. And really, the focus is just budget and what's happening, and to please let us know, talking to our representatives and senators, that just let us know what's happening and if there's any need for us to, to be a voice as any more than we are, or whatever, whatever else, other questions they may have for us, but to let us know what's going on as soon as they can. And I don't know if you have any updates at this moment on anything, or we're just kind of waiting?
I think we're, we're in a holding pattern right now, but the latest numbers that we did get back from the group, which are probably going to change, though, but they were positive, is that we were about $100,000 more in revenue than what we had put in the budget at this point in time. But again, there's a lot of negotiations going on with the governor and things of that nature, but that was the latest that we had received from CCM and COST a couple weeks ago.
Thank you. Board of Ed Liaison.
So, the Board of Education met on April 2nd and May 6th. Graduation and the last day of school set for June 12th. During their April meeting, the board was advised that there are deferred maintenance projects due to the necessary repairs to the FHS roof. And other areas straining the budget at this point are special education consultations, evaluations, nursing services, and in-town transportation. Teacher negotiations will be getting underway this summer. There's a preliminary meeting scheduled for June 20th with key Town Council members and the board's negotiation committee, and then the full schedule for negotiating meetings will be coming out soon. During their May meeting, a presentation was given by Julie Sawyer, Art Department Chair, on the K-12 Art Department's Program. And Julie's been a faculty member for many years in the district. She's retiring this spring, and her replacement as department chair will be Andrew Minor. Ed Manfredi, at the same meeting, Department Chair, gave a presentation on health, physical education, and wellness. And the department's recent goal is lifelong health and wellness of students around good decision-making, being active, knowledge and understanding, and setting goals. So, some areas of focus right now that they're working to address with students is physical activity and movement, an increase in e-cigarette use, and positive mental health. The district's summer program is going to be very busy again. This year will be located at Westwood School. And Veronica Rosick, Director of Curriculum, gave an overview of the State Department of Education Profile and Performance Report for the 17-18 school year. The State Department of Education is looking at more emphasis on a well-rounded education, equity, and student growth, and in those areas, Farmington did emerge in the top of the state on those measures. And on their May meeting, which was a busy meeting, they voted on two major appointments. Russ Christ, a faculty member for the past 18 years at Farmington High School, will serve as the new FHS Assistant Principal. And Susan McMahon, who's currently a faculty member at Westwood's Upper Elementary School, she's been with the district for 18, or for 21 years, she will serve as the new Assistant Principal at the middle school, Irving Robbins. And there was also an update that the district's Business Administrator, Vince LaFontaine, will be leaving the district to take on a position as Executive Director of the Flanders Nature Center in Watertown. And that's it.
And did you say graduation was June 12?
12.
Wow.
Early this year.
Yes, wow.
Early for a...
Great. Okay, thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
No report.
Economic Development.
Yes, the Economic Development Commission met on May 8th. They issued a positive referral for the Collinsville Savings Bank. So Collinsville Savings Bank is planning on building a bank at Post Office Square, right in front of the Anytime Fitness in that parking lot area. So their next step was to go to TPZ for site plan approval. Also, the EDC is hosting their quarterly business breakfast tomorrow, May 15th, starting at 7:45 a.m. at the Farmington Club. And the keynote speaker is David Griggs, the CEO and President of Metro Hartford Alliance. And the next EDC meeting is scheduled for June 12th at 5:30 p.m. here in the Town Hall.
Thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Nothing new to report.
Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority met April 10th. It was their annual meeting. They approved the budget for Maple Village. They ratified fair housing documents and policies and all of their Section 8 yearly approvals, and the next meeting is Wednesday, June 12th.
Okay. Human Relations Commission.
Okay, so since their last meeting in March, the Human Relations Commission has begun a partnership with the Friends Program at FHS. This is a group of students who assist students with disabilities throughout the school year, and they're going to work with that group to provide input to the FHS Building Committee around issues of access and responsiveness in the design. So far, the commission chair has met with a group of six student peer leaders from that group, and the commission meets again on May 22nd at 6:30 at the Community Center. And this meeting is going to focus on the planning of their business luncheon to take place this fall.
Thank you. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
TPZ.
Nothing new to report.
Unionville Historic District Commission.
Unionville Historic District Commission met on May 2nd, and they're beginning to plan for a fall tour of Suburban Park and Sanford and Holly. So it's still in the early stages of planning that event, but the tentative date for that walking tour is September 29th. And the next scheduled meeting for Unionville Historic District is June 6th, 7:00 p.m. at the Town Hall.
Okay. Thank you. UVIA.
Nothing to report.
WPCA.
Construction at the sewage treatment plant is obviously still ongoing. Some of the pump issues that I've been reporting on have been resolved. There are, it's my understanding, still some that are outstanding, but they're confident they will all be resolved in the near future, and they're not too alarmed at this point about any progress with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaisons?
Bicycle Advisory Commission. We have some new signs throughout town. Bicycles may use full lane. These signs are in very specific areas, River Road and Burlington Road. The goal of these signs is to educate the public and riders as to the current law in the state, where if a road is too narrow for a car and a bicycle to traverse side-by-side safely... starting at 7:45 a.m. at the Farmington Club. And the keynote speaker is David Griggs, the CEO and President of Metro Hartford Alliance. And the next EDC meeting is scheduled for June 12th at 5:30 p.m. here in the Town Hall.
Thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Nothing new to report.
Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority met April 10th. It was their annual meeting. They approved the budget for Maple Village. They ratified fair housing documents and policies and all of their Section 8 yearly approvals. And the next meeting is Wednesday, June 12th.
Human Relations Commission.
So, since their last meeting in March, the Human Relations Commission has begun a partnership with the Friends Program at FHS. This is a group of students who assist students with disabilities throughout the school year. And they're going to work with that group to provide input to the FHS Building Committee around issues of access and responsiveness in the design. So far, the commission chair has met with a group of six student peer leaders from that group. And the commission meets again on May 22nd at 6:30 at the Community Center. And this meeting is going to focus on the planning of their business luncheon to take place this fall.
Thank you. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
TPZ.
Nothing new to report.
Unionville Historic District Commission.
Unionville Historic District Commission met on May 2nd. And they're beginning to plan for a fall tour of Suburban Park and Sanford and Holly. So it's still in the early stages of planning that event. But the tentative date for that walking tour is September 29th. And the next scheduled meeting for Unionville Historic District is June 6th, 7 p.m. at the Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. UVIA.
Nothing to report.
WPCA.
Construction at the sewage treatment plant is obviously still ongoing. Some of the pump issues that I've been reporting on have been resolved. There are, it's my understanding, still some that are outstanding, but they're confident they will all be resolved in the near future. And they're not too alarmed at this point about any progress with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaisons?
Bicycle Advisory Commission. We have some new signs throughout town. Bicycles may use full lane. These signs are in very specific areas, River Road and Burlington Road. The goal of these signs is to educate the public and riders as to the current law in the state where if a road is too narrow for a car and a bicycle to traverse side by side safely, the bicycle may, and in some cases should, take the center of the lane so it's a safe way to travel. This is nothing new as far as the laws. These are our first signs that are going up that say bicycles may use fully lane. So just keep an eye out for that and be aware of the laws there. Also, with the Bicycle Friendly Farmington Group, this is, May is National Bike Month. So we've got a number of activities going on. We've already had a Bike to School Day. That was last Wednesday, or last Friday, excuse me, from Union School. We had over 150 students. This was our fourth year doing this. So some of the students have been there all four years. 150 students being there was a great group. There are parents that join in too. We will have another Bicycle to School Day at Westwood's. That will be on the 29th. And this Friday is Bike to Work Day. So we will be over at the parking lot on New Britton Avenue. We'll have caffeine and sweets there for anyone who is biking in that general area between 6:45 and 8:45. So please come join us. Also, in the evening of that same day, we are having a, called a Firefly Ride. It's a ride with lights that will be going on at 8:45. Will be starting in the same parking lot. And in addition to all of that, there will be a trail ride, Bike to Us, trying to encourage people to ride with friends, starting at the parking lot near the Mini Golf. And that is everything we have going on for Bike Month. In addition, one other thing, Farmington has just been awarded the Bronze Level by the National Bicycle Association of America as a bike-friendly community.
Great.
That's all we have.
Thank you. Lots. And if we have some nice weather, that would even help.
Hopefully we have nice weather.
Okay, yes.
So Farmington High School Building Committee.
We should put that on so that we can...
I'm sorry. Yeah. I must have taken it off on accident. Sorry about that. I have a lot here. I wasn't going to let it.
Go ahead, go.
The Farmington High School Building Committee is off to a great start. They've had two meetings since the end of April. The committee members have had an initial review of those existing documents and reports from the previous building committee and ad hoc committees. They've reviewed the charge and the roles and responsibilities of members. The concept of all members being champions of the high school project was kind of discussed as a mantra, I guess. There was significant discussion about the importance of communication, as we all know. That is a key goal of this group. And they talked about a communication vision being a big part of the committee's work. That's going to be ongoing, basically. Subcommittee's were set up at the first meeting. Professional Partnerships, which will be responsible for RFPs. Site Evaluation, so looking at possible sites other than the municipal campus, the current location of the high school. Communications and Financial. So there's a full meeting schedule that's out through the end of the year for the committee. And there's a tentative timeline through August right now. The committee did have some discussion about holding some of its meetings, particularly when there are presentations or big decisions to be made later. Right now, they've been meeting at 5:00. So they're talking about meeting at 7:00 p.m. in those situations to make it easier for most members of the public to attend. At last week's meeting, the town's legal counsel gave a presentation on elections, enforcement rules, and recommendations, which was really helpful, on how the committee and the town can perform their duties with, within those restrictions. I think the main takeaway for the group for that was that there are restrictions on advocacy with town resources that take effect when the warning for the referendum question is publicized and the referendum is set, but not before that. So even then, it is not so much about the role of the town staff or the elected officials, but the expenditure of the town funds. So the group was able to get clarity on, on some of those rules and restrictions. So I have some updates from the subcommittees. The Financial Subcommittee looks like they're going to have their first meeting next week, Monday or Tuesday is likely. Communications' first meeting is tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Ed Conference Room here in Town Hall. The Site Evaluation Subcommittee met last week. That Subcommittee was formed to review and consider sites outside of the current location of the high school, to assess the feasibility for locating a new high school on a different site. And that was in response to the community coming forward and saying that that was not a big enough part of the previous building committee's work. So last Thursday, the Subcommittee met. Liz Dolphin was pulled in, the town's land consultant and former assistant town planner. She was very helpful to get out the map and start looking at potential sites. The group decided to review both town-owned and privately-owned potential sites. And we'll look at the sites broken down by kind of two sizes. 30 to 35 acres, which is similar to the existing site, including all the parking and fields and athletic facilities. And then the second size group would be 15 to 20 acres, which would be enough for pretty much the high school building and parking and maybe some green space. So at last week's meeting, the group was able to look at the larger acreage sites. There were about 17 town-owned potential properties in that group and about seven privately-owned. And that is now being put into a chart to look at all the different factors and things that need to be considered. And so the second meeting is being planned to look at that smaller size group, which is likely going to be scheduled for late next week. We don't have a date on that. And then lastly, the Professional Partnership Subcommittee. The RFP for the owner's rep was developed, put out, and the due date was today. And there were six responses, which we've gotten copies of. They're planning on, when we look at the timeline, hiring the owner's rep by June 7th. And the architectural RFPs are currently being developed. And in this process, as the Subcommittee was meeting, they felt that they needed guidance from members of the town council regarding the existing 1928 building, as well as other buildings on the municipal campus. So I know that's being brought forward for discussion tonight. And I think that's... Bring you up to speed. I don't know if Paul has anything to add.
I think you summed it up well.
Well, you helped.
Is that...
That's it for my report.
So what we, what we are going to talk about is the committee's discussion of the site itself. And you all have some information that you got, actually, that was placed in front of you tonight. But it had some basic questions that, that was sent out. And we're going to have a discussion about the site itself. The committee wants some direction as to, are there any things that basically, some are, that are off limits on this site? The site being this whole site that includes the high school, the Town Hall, 1928 building, the library, and the Staples House. That's what you see on this listing that you see before you. So I think that one of the things, I'll just interject to be, one of the things we talked about was the, through the survey, was looking at having many options. And with this RFP or RFQ process, having options and for them to use their imagination and ingenuity in using this whole site. So we need to give direction in, to let them know, is there anything that's off limits? And so, is there, did you have, that was the conversation at your committee?
Yeah, so I think you guys both kind of summed it up well. We, the question came up at the Subcommittee meeting as they're writing the Architectural RFP. They had asked what the council's take was. And I wasn't comfortable speaking for all seven of us, obviously. So hopefully, everybody has had some kind of awareness of these discussion points. And I think the goal here is to get consensus on what on the campus would be in play and as far as the competitive nature of these designs and what wouldn't be. Don't know if we should just start talking about it, basically. So I guess my personal flair on this would be kind of the whole point to the competitive nature of these designs is to get as many options creatively as possible without necessarily putting restrictions on the designers. That being said, I don't personally see why the Staples House or the library help somehow altering or taking those down would productively or economically solve our high school issues. So personally, I would maybe steer clear of those. But I would keep everything else on the campus open. So I guess to get things started, those are my personal takes. But I didn't want to put those out there at the meeting just because I wanted to get everyone else's take here. And we can, we have, our next meeting is Friday for that Subcommittee. So we can take this feedback and give it to them this week, what everyone thinks.
Thoughts? Go ahead, Kathy.
I, I agree with a lot of Paul's sentiments that the point of this is to get as much information as possible so that way we can create the best plan. And I do know a lot of the feedback from the town, members of the town, was why, well, at least what I heard was, why didn't you consider this? Why didn't you consider that? And I think it's important that we try to consider as many options as possible. That being said, I feel similarly about the library in part because I think there's great advantages to having the library and the high school in the same general area for high school students to be able to walk to the library after school if needed. I think if, however, if there was a compelling economic reason to consider moving the library, then perhaps it should be considered. But it would be, I think that one's the toughest one for me because I see a great advantage of the high school and the library being near each other. The other question I had is, while I appreciate these four questions, I know last time around I heard questions about the tennis courts and the turf field. So I think we should also be considering, I mean, in my opinion, we should be considering the full parcel. And I don't object to considering a project that would require relocate, remove, relocating the turf field or relocating tennis courts. Because I think, again, it, we need to look at the big picture.
Okay. Other thoughts? CJ, here.
Just a couple. First off, we had a copy of the survey in our information here. In our Survey Committee, these items, the facility change items, which have percentages of people who brought them up, anywhere from 22% down to 3.8%. These were not items on a list. These were items that people brought up, that they thought of themselves. So how it was explained to us from the group running the survey was anything in the teens is a really big number because you just had people randomly picking these things. So the update, the 1928 building, where 14.2% might not seem like a large number, according to the Survey Committee, that is a big number. That's just kind of trying to put all these numbers in a little bit of, give a reference point. That being said, the four items that we have on here, the 1928 building, 900 weighing, the turf field, and the tennis courts, they were all items that we, probably all of us and everyone in the town had heard over time. These were concerns of various people within the community. That being said, I think when we first were creating this committee and setting the charge, it was my understanding that we all agreed, basically, everything was on the table. I would hate to see any historic building go. I happen to like most historic buildings. But if it was a prohibitive cost and expense, then I think it would be wrong for us to out of hand discard that. If the, even something as large as the library, which I'd be shocked if there was any way to financially make sense out of moving or taking down the library and rebuilding a new one, I think you leave it on the table and we hear what the professionals come up with. I think we have to give them sort of the carte blanche to tell us what they think is the best move. Letting them put it in their plans doesn't mean that's what's going to be done. But we're trying to look at something that makes the most financial and logical sense for the residents of our town. So I would be in favor of keeping everything on the table right now. And if we see something that we find is not logical from our viewpoint, then we bring it up at that point in time. But I think it would make the most sense to keep everything on the table right now.
Other thoughts?
I suppose, yeah, I would agree with CJ in terms of this being open to consideration doesn't tie our hands further on down the road, but only allows for a professional firm to kind of use their creativity and consider lots of different uses of the whole campus. I have a sense that it won't make sense for the library either. And I know that, although I'd probably need to be more informed on the history of the Staples House, I know that that's a historic building. And I know our 1928 building is historic as well. But I think sometimes the ideal solution might mean some trade-offs in those areas. And if it makes sense to be more cost-effective in the long run to our taxpayers, I think we have to be open to considering that. I think sometimes what might come to light may not be initially, or it may initially kind of go against what we have as a vision, as open-minded as we're trying to be. We may have an idea of what the right solution is. So we just need to be open to hearing from the professionals and considering all the different options at this point. So I think that's, that's where I stand now. I'm willing to consider just about anything. But I'm, I'm very hesitant on the library and the Staples House because I'm having a hard time understanding how that would be a big benefit in the process. But then again, trying to be open-minded and see what, what the professionals have to say.
Yeah, so I think I'm in agreement with a lot of the comments made. You know, I do like all the historic buildings we have here in town. But it's very difficult to make a decision on each one of these without having a plan in front of us. And that's really what we charged the Building Committee with, was going out to these architects and getting various plans and coming back to us with multiple plans so that we'd have a full plan to evaluate the costs and benefit of each of those plans and then make a decision with all of the information. So with that said, I, I think it makes sense to, you know, really leave it, leave it open so that we can see all the creativity, all the different ideas that might come out of this process. And I think that's going to lead to us having the opportunity to choose from the best options.
Go ahead. Yeah, I, I actually came here tonight thinking, and listening to everyone, I think my, my mind is, is agreeing with pretty much everyone. I think at first I was thinking that the Staples House, you know, again, I don't want anything to be done with the Staples House. But we did go into this process, and it's, I believe, Kathy, this is the first time that we're ever doing this, where we're trying to create some competitive design with two different architect firms, once we narrow it down to two different architect firms. And I think leaving everything on the table gives them an opportunity to be creative and think of ways innovatively of how they can accomplish this for our community. It doesn't mean that they're going to touch any of these things, but it gives them the opportunity that if they were, and if it makes sense to our community, that the council could either agree or disagree with their recommendation. So I think I would like to keep everything on the table as well, just to keep that innovation going with those architects to figure out what is the best solution for this campus, if the choice is to put a school on this campus. Because we're still looking at options for an alternate site as well. So all these factors are in play. We don't know which direction that these firms may come back with. We may have two different options, you know? And I think we just need to let those professionals kind of educate us what makes sense for us, not only financially, but for the, the needs that we need to do for, for the school. So I, I think I would probably leave everything on the campus open.
Okay.
So I guess more just a question to everybody to make sure we're all on the same page, saying the same thing. If, because remember, we're doing an RFP for the architects to give us competitive, eventually they're going to, we're going to have competitive designs. But right now, they're going to give us competitive bids. They're going to give numbers on what they're going to charge us and dates that it's going to take them to do these designs. Is the expectation that if they were to build the high school where the library is right now, we would be putting a library somewhere else in kind? be putting a library somewhere else in kind, somewhere, somewhere else? Or could they just demo it and there's no lib, you know, just no library anymore? And same thing for the Staples House, is the expectation if they build the high school and it somehow impedes on the Staples House, are they picking it up on a crane and moving it elsewhere? Or is literally tearing it down something they could do and they have the freedom to do? I think, I just think we have to be clear how we answer the questions, because this will affect the wording of the RFP that the subcommittee comes up with. And if the answer's, you know, if it, if there's slim to no chance that we're gonna accept a project that demos the Staples House, but we're not clear, and somebody develops a plan that's gonna demo the Staples House, well, now we've gone from two options to one realistic option. We've actually reduced the competition a little bit. So I just want to be careful on, I mean, I'm all for keeping this competition as wide ranging as possible, but I think to do that, we just have to be very clear on our directive here.
Well, I guess we're gonna, yes, we, we do have to give them some direction, and I guess, I don't know that, well, we'll have to see what the majority feels, but I would not say you can go demo the library. You know, I think, to me, we're not gonna, well, I'm not even gonna use that word. I would, I would say that the library and the Staples House are not the area that, that they should be looking. And I would furthermore say that I would, the rest of the complex, as far as I'm concerned, is something they can look at, whether it's anything from this road up. But I also have a soft spot for the 1928 building. And I would, in many communities that I've seen out there, they will put in, a lot of times in an old building, in an old school, they will actually put the municipal, like the BOE and the, and the town, what we have now here for, for our town, town offices, put that and have a municipal building, which I think that's, maybe that's a possibility for the 1928. One of the things that was in the, part of the proposals last time, and I think is something that's discussed now, is what the Board of Ed needing more space, the town needing more space, what do we do adding on, a new place? I think that's something I'd like to see the possibilities of these firms come in and show us what's possible there. Maybe it's the 1928 building, that that's a set alone municipal building, and the rest of the complex is the school and fields and however they, and parking lots. But for me, the library and the Staples House, I don't know that they could move the Staples House maybe, but I don't, I just can't imagine that moving a library is going to be cost effective. And so for me, those two are more off limits, and the other is looking at the area as a whole. So I don't know if your expectation is that we're, we're talking about from the, from Route 4 all the way to the Highlands, that that's just an open field? I don't, I guess I'm not clear myself. CJ?
I, I appreciate Paul, you bringing that up, because we do have to make sure we've got a level playing field here. I think the fact that we put all buildings, and I, I have no problem putting all buildings, including the library, in play, but anything that someone comes in and says they're gonna take away from us, they have to add in the cost of replacing that. You were just talking about the municipal building. If they were using this building for any other reason, and the municipal had to be gone from this building, then part of their proposal has to be, where do these people go and how do we make this at least to this level or more? If they think it makes sense to level that library, and they can build one better than we had, okay. I can't imagine that that's gonna make sense either. With the Staples House, you know what, if they want to move it, then maybe we consider that if that makes sense. But again, I think the library and the Staples House will be fairly unlikely that it would make sense to do, but I wouldn't take it off the table if they come up with ideas. But when we're going out and putting these, they're coming with bids, I think they need to know, anything that they would take away from this complex has to be rebuilt as the level it is or better.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to add on. So I appreciate you saying that, CJ, and I think the reason why I, I'm, I think if we can make that clear to that process, I think until we get the actual data or the results, we don't, we, we can sit here saying it doesn't make sense. We don't know. I'm assuming it may not make sense, but we don't know until we actually see the information. And we're not necessarily the professionals until we actually see the data. And I'm a, a true believer that numbers really tell a story. And, you know, this is a competitive design. If they have the full slate and they're trying to be competitive, going with the thought process that CJ had mentioned, that if they're gonna take something, they're gonna make sure that it gets replaced as well, or the Staples House being moved. But in order to be competitive and making sure that they're giving us the best design, you know, they have to figure that out. It's not, I don't think it would be us at that point in time.
Just to, because I think you guys are saying the same thing, but I want to make sure I'm understanding. So if the library were to be removed for the high school project, the expectation would be they replace it at minimum in kind to what it is now. The Staples House, with its historic nature, would have to be, that physical building would get placed somewhere else. Not, that wouldn't get rebuilt in 2020. That, that would be moved to a different location.
Correct.
And those costs would have to be baked into the cost for that team's project.
Yes.
So the only thing, and that's, I think that's fine. I think the owner's rep, which is a central authority that's gonna be pricing this, they gave us proposals today, not based on that level of pricing. So I think what we'll have to do is when we shortlist and interview those teams, if we were to go with this approach, we would just have to ask, ask for some kind of unit pricing, add, deduct, as we add, because we're talking about adding potential scope in to those, to those firms. And, you know, that would, those would be change orders on their end. So the committee would just have to handle that, which I think they could, but this is all stuff we need to get straightened up tonight, for those reasons, I think.
Other thoughts and comments?
How long ago was the library redone? Excuse me? How long ago was the library redone?
I would say, if I was on that committee, I would say 2002, 2003.
Okay.
It was, it was before 2004, I can guarantee you that, because my name's on the plaque.
Isn't that special?
And Staples House, is that considered? Is it on a registry?
Yes, yeah, that one is.
But the idea of that being moved is another possibility in.
But that cost would be baked into.
Right, well, that's part of the cost, though.
To move it.
Just like building a new library would be.
Yeah, and, and I guess with the 1928 building, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Nancy, about municipal building and, you know, maybe addressing some of the issues here by combining and, and moving those, the staff and offices for Board of Education and the town count, and the town hall into that building. But I think what we heard the last time was, that comes, you preserving that building and using it and getting it up to code and usable comes at a cost that is probably significantly higher than if you just incorporate that space, that square footage into a newer building or a part of the high school building, or however that design process goes. So like Staples House, keeping it, moving it rather than demoing it and just building another office building somewhere else for the staff to continue to run their programs and do their, their work. So those are all factors. And when we look at these different buildings and their function, and how married we are to keeping the actual building.
I'd like to, I guess we never really did vet the whole, well, I, I don't guess, the whole site was never vetted before, which was, you know, we kind of, as you, that some, certain things were, we weren't gonna touch. And with that said, we really never went into what the 1928 building, there were some possibilities, but as far as using it as a total municipal building, we really didn't look at that either.
Right.
We looked at using the BOE was a floor and a half, is what the BOE thought they would take. And the discussion was then of doing two floors, so that we had accommodations for conference rooms and things, and leaving the third. That was the way it was in the, in the last building when we did the renovation, but that was the discussion. But I don't know what it would take, you know? So I'm interested to see if that's what that possibility is too, that's all, I guess. CJ?
With this, I would assume if someone is looking at using this building here, just like they're having three different ideas on the high school, what it would cost to upkeep it, renovating and building new, if someone was putting this particular building in the mix, I would think one of the comparative costs is how much each year we take on our budget to keep this building updated, because we know there are a lot of issues with the building as it stands. We know there are costs involved in this building. So if someone's coming with a proposal, I would assume that would be part of their proposal. Well, here's the cost of keeping the municipal building as it is. I also don't know, and again, this is why we're, we obviously go to the professionals. The 1928 building was discussed to be incorporated into a high school. I don't know what the differences are and the costs are in incorporating it as a municipal building versus a high school. I'm sure there are very different regulations and different needs. So that's why we're trying to open it up, I think, to all possibilities. Let the professionals tell us, look, that makes no sense, or it's a brilliant idea. One or the other, or somewhere in between is more likely.
And I guess I, just to, to add a little to what I said too in this business about municipal, CJ, too, is we talk every year, as you just said, and that was what was in my mind, every year we go through, how much should we use for here, for, for this building to renovate, to do the air conditioning, to make, make it ADA accessible to, you know, more so. But we talk about that every year with our budget. So I guess I'm interested to see is, what's the possibility of, or flexibility with using the site too, you know? And we did talk about BOE in the part of, the other part of the building at the, at the high school, putting on a second floor on the, what was it, 1972, the, or the 800 wing, using the BOE, putting the BOE up there and seeing what that. So there were all kinds of discussions about municipal use, and I, I guess, so I'm interested to hear what the possibilities might be from, from these, and what the costs might be. Because we know we have costs here every year.
So, one, it kind of just dawned on me, a little, I don't know if it's a concern or a question, but if, like hypothetically, let's say a design team said they'd like to build the high school right here and move the town hall to the 1928 building, would the expectation be that that design team designed the new town hall in the 1928 building? Because now they're essentially reporting to a high school building committee. It's not, this is not some kind of holistic committee we created. And they would be essentially designing a high school and a town hall. I'm all for keeping this as open as possible and, you know, the competition as much as possible, obviously. I mean, I want to be clear about that. But I just have some concerns with, if we're too loose, we might actually be reducing the competition in the long run, because we might come up with some controversy down the road if, you know, well, the architect may say, well, no, we didn't budget to design the town hall, we just said we'd put it there. Well, how do we know how much it's gonna cost to turn the 1928 building into a town hall and make it code compliant with today's codes? So I, we should be clear, you know, is, if, if that's their expectation, then they can include all that in their bids now, that's fine. But essentially, we would have an architect designing a town hall, a library, moving a Staples House, you know, whatever option could come up, and that architect would be reporting to an FHS building committee. Is that, would that be our, our goal?
That's a good question. Kathy?
No, I, I guess what I would just comment on is that I think we should just try to take this one step at a time, that there's a lot of different moving parts that are gonna come out of it. And I think it's kind of different in I, how, with the processes. And I don't think we can interpret every single thing that's going to happen. I think your point is valid, but I'm not sure if we need to really bog down with it right now, because, again, it's not that a lot of municipalities use public buildings afterwards. So if that was the case, I think we could probably try to figure out, because I don't know if we're gonna be able to come up with an answer, you know, for that, you know? I think that one of the things they're definitely gonna have to do, it's gonna have to be part of the cost, if that's their overall plan, just like you said, it's gonna have to be part of it. And it's gonna be, you know, part of their plan to do that, I think, you know? I don't know.
But that would be part of their cost that they give us in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
So they would have to know they want to do that.
Right.
Essentially, a couple of weeks.
Right.
Because they're giving us their, their RFPs are gonna go out and be due within the next, I guess, month or so. I don't know what the due date is, but.
I mean, I think it would have to definitely be incorporated, and that would, again, say that they would be designing office spaces for the town hall. I mean, I think you would have to say that would be part of their, their charge, because, again, how are they gonna give us the cost for it?
Right.
So it would have to be part of it. But they're gonna look at the whole site, and if, if it's in their benefit, in the benefit, or in the whole thing, that this site is, you know, if where this town hall is located is such a better potential for having a high school located here, it may be that, you know, that's what they're there for to kind of look at, right?
Correct. And I think, so you might have an architect who gives a expense twice as much as someone else, but that's because he or she is doing twice the amount of work as someone else. So we might actually start to see some of these ideas extremely early on in the process, because once they give us a price, they're kind of boxed into that price. So they're not gonna want to design a second building if they're fixed into that one price. Which is fine, I'm not, I'm just kind of trying to get all this figured out tonight, so we don't come back to this next month, because I know the, they want to move ahead with the RFP at the next couple of meetings.
So Paul, when you say design to buildings, are you saying, like, if they repurpose the 1928 building, that would be considered designing? Because basically, they're repurposing maybe the footprint inside, but.
In other words, how, so if the owner's rep's gonna say how much it would cost to turn that building into a town hall, what is the owner's rep based their pricing on? They would need some level of design from an architect, I would think.
And that's if it makes sense for them to use a spot. I, I mean, we really don't know if they're gonna go down that path at all.
Correct. But I'm just saying, they would have to decide that, like, when they're given their bids in the next month, they would pretty much have to make that decision really soon, if, if that's a good idea or not. And then down the road, they may, let's say six, four months from now, they think it's a good idea. It might be too late, because they've already given us their bid. They're, they're gonna do these designs for X dollars.
Because if we go with what Patty was talking about, which I think we're all agreeing that, you know, there was talk about the turf fields, and people didn't want us to touch the tennis courts and the turf fields and all that stuff, because there was so much money spent on it. Obviously, if we, if, if these architects come back with a new design, and let's just say that they're not using this location, that they want to put it somewhere else, there's an expense there that they're gonna have to rebuild those fields again. And I don't know what the difference between remodeling office space versus rebuilding turf fields, if it's comparable. I don't even know. That's something that I would think that they would decide that as well. Because, you know, if they move, let's just say that they're not gonna repurpose the town hall location or, or anything, they're gonna go somewhere where there's, there's no additional property. They're gonna find a spot on the campus somewhere. But then we gotta take up a field that we probably paid over, close to $2 million. And then we're gonna have to build it again.
That's all part of those costs.
Correct. But now, if they decide to use this location, and I don't know what the price difference is, but the difference between that relocating the turf fields, but maybe doing the office space, it may balance out if they went down there. I, I just don't know. That's why I think we need to hear from them.
Hear from them. Yeah. Okay.
CJ has a comment.
So if we take the library and the Staples House off, we're, we're giving them an RFP more doable, but we're not using the site. CJ?
Well, going to a comment that Paul just made, this is a high school building committee. I think when we are talking about expanding the scope or looking at other locations, we would be doing that to save money in some way, shape, or form. In essence, if they could design a high school where we're sitting right now, and build a new municipal building, or repurpose the 1928 building. or repurpose the 1928 building at a cost less than another group could just build the high school where it stands, or a different location, we get a free building. You know, nothing's free, but we get that building thrown into the same cost. To me, that then makes sense, but it's not now saying, hey, maybe they're going to redo this building, so let's see what a new town hall and a high school would cost, because then we've just vastly expanded the scope of what we're talking about here. So to me, the only reason to look at these other buildings is we can do it at a more economical cost. So they would indeed then have to say, this is the cost for repurposing the 1928 building, if that were it, or building an entirely new municipal building somewhere, but that entire cost is what their bid would be, competing with someone who's not necessarily doing that.
Right. So you're saying they would have to be then explaining why it's going to cost less for them to do that in the end, so?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah, and it's, go ahead, Beth. I was just going to say, it's similar to if they, the subcommittee is able to find another location, we don't know, there could be something on that location as well. So there's, there's all these different avenues that these architects have to look at, if there was another location, and we don't know those answers yet, so.
And I was just going to say, I think what I'm hearing is, we're going to be looking for some pretty clear analysis as to what these different options really, how, how it translates into cost savings, and, and what we're getting for those dollars in the design. And I would think that's where the owner's rep can come in and kind of parse that out, and, I don't know, I'm not exactly clear on the role.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And I think, I think this is all good, and this is good feedback to give back to the committee. And I'm, I'm not saying I'm against this anywhere, we just have to be prepared for the possibility of some additional services or change orders from the owner's reps, and potentially the architects, after we've selected them, which is always not as competitive as when you're bidding them out. Of course, those costs aren't nearly as much as the construction costs, but the only downside I would see to what we're talking about is the potential for owner's rep and architectural change orders, if some of this stuff was figured out down the road after we accept a proposal from somebody. We can work as a subcommittee to get as much unit pricing, I think, upfront as possible to, while, while things are competitive, is how I would combat that. But that's really the biggest downside. And, and again, I, hearing everyone, I, I think I agree, I think this is the way to go.
So can, can I just, because when you talk about the unit pricing, because you had mentioned something about adding in the add-deduct once we shortlist these individuals, would that help us understand what those change orders would be? If, just explain a little bit the add-deduct process that you've mentioned?
So, the owner's reps were given numbers based on the survey for the high school, for the three options, the new build, the renovated is new, and the do-nothing maintenance. What I think, before this discussion came up, I was going to suggest to, and I suggested at the full building committee meeting, and I was going to suggest it to the subcommittee, is include some add-deduct pricing if, because we don't know what this is going to cost. That's the whole point of this competitive design, we have no idea what these costs are going to be. If it costs more than what those prices were, that the survey said, how much more are you going to charge us as an owner's rep to price that out? If it costs less, how much less, on a per-unit basis, are you going to charge us to price that out? We can take that concept and apply it to other building, costs of pricing other, other buildings, and apply it elsewhere, to try to get as much information from these owner's reps as possible before we select one. Does that make sense?
I think so. I think, I, I, I think it does, I think it's, it, once we start seeing it, I think it will make more sense, so.
Yeah, I think so. I'm, I'm pretty clear to, to help that, help the committee out. Are you? I think how CJ described it is a pretty good way to describe it.
Yeah, and I think this is a good way to go, honestly. We just have to be very careful in how we word this.
Right.
Because we're not, right now, besides giving clear direction, we're not making any decision, because we've got to hear from these architects. So we're not making any decision tonight, except for giving clarity to the building committee, subcommittee, to move forward with their, their RFQ.
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 Paul? I ask how you want it reflected in the minutes, what your consensus is?
No.
How about, what, that?
I?
What I had put down, what I had is to leave it open, but anything removed needs to be replaced in the Staples House.
Replace or repurpose?
Reflected in the, in the dollars, is that, that's what?
Well, in the design.
Well, Paul, it's back to the first part. We're leaving it wide open, that if they choose to remove any building, they must replace it similar or an improvement.
Well, okay.
With the Staples House, if the Staples House were to be relocated, that's the only option, and there's no demo of the Staples House.
So can, can I just add on to what CJ said? He said remove, but can we also say remove or repurpose, because?
Well, how would you repurpose this building?
No, but maybe the 1928?
The 1928, and I don't know about this building, you know?
Well, if that?
There's like so many different things.
If you start stipulating about the 1928 building, that's not.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. I, I just said repurpose. So what if they chose as part of their design to not necessarily remove the 1928 building, but repurpose it? Because I, I just heard the word remove, and I-
I guess, I was thinking more about if they're dealing with the library or the municipal building. Why don't we leave it at those two buildings? If they do anything with these two buildings, they must replace in kind or better.
Right. And that's why I said, and the Staples House would have to be removed to another site.
Yes.
Moved, moved. That's what, you know, that's what I said.
And there's no restriction on the 1928, that's open for?
Yeah, I think we leave that open right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And the rest of the site is open too?
Rest of the site is totally.
That's like the fields and everything.
The fields and all that stuff.
And the courts, yeah.
To leave it, to leave the site open to whatever they want to do. But anything, if the, any, the town hall or the library that were to be removed as part of the project would have to be replaced as similar or better.
Correct.
And the Staples House has to be moved.
Physically moved, yeah.
Yes.
Touched.
Yes.
So we're not moving the 1928?
That's what I wanted to be clear about.
I was waiting for CJ to come back.
If they want to move it, that's, if they can do it economically.
Can we just move the cookroom?
Yeah.
That's, yes, thank you, just the centerpiece.
Just got that back lit up, not too many years ago, so.
Just so we're all clear, is that true, we're not, we're, that therefore we are not moving the place in 28?
No.
No, no, that's not true.
No.
And-
Nancy said it.
There's no restriction.
1928.
So there's no restriction on it.
No restriction.
So I'm reflected.
Yeah.
The only building on this entire property that must remain looking as it does right now is the Staples House. Anything else can be modified, leveled, anything. But if these two are, they have to replace them.
I get it.
Good, yeah.
I couldn't relate this accurately.
Yes, we get it.
You feel like you have a no?
I get it.
Because I couldn't do it.
Yeah, I get it.
Good point.
That's the consensus.
Okay, well, good.
Good. Okay. Well. That was the longest update of-
I hope it's the longest I ever have.
Are you going to ask for any more committees?
No, none, we're cut off. No, are there any other liaisons that I've forgotten?
What I read off?
Okay, okay. Onto Kay, reported the town manager, Kathy.
You have the report in front of you, just for the camera, just for everyone, remember that the Memorial Day Parade is scheduled for Monday, May 27. The parade in the Farmington section of town will form up at 8:00 AM and step off at 8:30, and the Unionville section will form up at 10:00 AM and step off at 10:30. So that's coming up on Monday, May 27. We did have a bond sale, a bond sale, and we're pleased to report that we had a very good rate. It was one of the lowest in Connecticut this year, and also that our AAA Moody's rating was reassigned. So that was good news for us, and thank you, Joe, for doing that for us. As you can see, I do have a personnel update, that I have done some restructuring in the town manager's office and the economic development office. So I think that this restructuring will be very much in benefit of being able to accomplish our goals and objectives, and that's with Kat in my office, and you all know Kat. We also had quite a bit of donations for the community and recreation department, and Nancy Parent, our community and recreation director, I think is going to be looking to come to one of our meetings sometime in the future, to talk about this CLIC, Community Links for Information and Communication and Knowledge. So she did get a grant about it, and it's what I wrote right here, it's an online tool, but I think she's interested in coming and just showing the council this, because I, she's, I think it's very neat, and we did get a $10,000 grant for it. And we did get some, a grant for the fire department, and one of the ones that I just wanted to mention, it's from our businesses, is ServePro donation, and it was a $9,000 donation to help clean some of the apparatus, and this is based on some new reg, different regulations that we have to do, but that was quite a generous donation and unexpected, so that was ServePro. And Community Chest, of course, they have been very, very generous to the town of Farmington, and they have donated another thermal image camera for our fire department. So we did write letters, and the grants, it's, we have a generous business community, and also our other groups too, like the Farmington Community Chest, and it really does help us out with our budget. So I don't know if you have any questions or anything else.
Any other questions, Kathy? Can I have a motion to accept her report?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, appointments. L6?
Yeah, item L6, I move that Joan Valenti be appointed as Justice of the Peace for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 4, 2021.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Any old business? New business? N1?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that the property tax rate of 27.97 mils be levied on the net taxable grant list of October 1, 2018, in the amount of $3,669,373,325 to meet the appropriation of the town of Farmington for the fiscal year beginning in January, July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of 2020, and such, and that such tax shall be payable in equal installments on July 1 of 2019 and January 1 of 2020, except that the property tax, as defined in Section 12-141 of the Connecticut General Statutes, in the amount not in excess of $100 shall be due and payable in a single payment on July 1 of 2019, as provided by Section 12-144 of the Connecticut General Statute, and except that any tax on motor vehicles shall be due and payable in full on July 1 of 2019, as provided in Section 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statute, and that the solid waste service charge be set at $235 for the fiscal year beginning July 1 of 2019.
Second.
Any discussion, or Kathy?
This is just our setting the tax rate, and congratulations on the, the passing of the budget.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N2?
I move to approve the transfer on uncollectible property taxes to the suspense tax book.
Second.
This is our, our suspense tax book, you have to do this every year, and this is what the tax collector's recommended, the total sum is $26,405.91, and if anyone would like a, a copy of the book, just let me know.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N3?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the Capital Region Natural, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, Update 2019-2024.
Second.
You have the resolution behind the motion, and basically what that is, is allowing us to participate, to apply for FEMA hazard mitigation grants.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N4?
I move to award the contract to Glasel Materials LLC to supply and place bitumis materials on the town roads for the 2019 paving season at a cost not to exceed $750,000.
Second.
This is our road, a bid to do our roads, and this is off the state bid.
Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N5?
I move to cancel the May 28, 2019 town council meeting.
Second.
And generally, this is here, if we don't pass the budget, to go back and go through other things, like setting the tax rate. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N6?
I move to change the time of the June 25, 2019 town council meeting from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM in Conference Room A at the Farmington Town Hall.
Second.
Any questions about this? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. N7?
I move that local 331 International Brotherhood of the Police Officer and, police officers and the town of Farmington have reached a tentative collective bargaining agreement, highlights listed below.
Second.
You have the highlights in front of you, the police bargain, the police union has ratified this. We feel very good about this agreement, it is a three-year contract. It does have various language and procedural changes that have no net cost, but are favorable for the town. We have made significant health insurance changes, which again, is pushing, we hope, for everyone to go to the high deductible plan, and so that is helpful for us. We have the three years of wage adjustments. The one thing that we do want, I would want to mention is that something that we do have in our contract with the police that's somewhat different than some of the other contracts, which is, is a benefit, is that the employees currently contribute a percentage of their, of their salary into the retiree health insurance plan, and that's something that was increasing from 0.25% to 0.5%. And that the last time we had gotten that in the contract, and that's something that is, again, trying to manage our retiree health insurance benefits for the police officers. So part of the idea is that the police officers would like to pay upfront while they're working, instead of later on when they're retired. So it goes into the account, and that helps, it's the town's money, and helps pay for the retiree health insurance. It's a three-year contract, and the overall cost of the contract is 1.46% per year. We, the town continually takes steps to address our long-term liability cost and our collective bargaining agreements. This proposed agreement makes significant changes to employee benefits, this time in the health insurance co-pays. The contribution increase to the retiree medical contribution is noteworthy, is an important step in addressing the town's long-term liability for health insurance, both in this union and town-wide. The, we have done, I think, a good job of trying to keep the payroll costs down, and 1.46% per year, I think is a, a good number for us, and it's a three-year contract, and we've worked collectively with our police department on this, and both of us are a little unhappy on some parts of it, which I think makes it a, a good agreement.
Questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Kathy, 1.46%, is that a 1.46% increase each year of current salaries? What's that a percent of?
That's the overall contract cost. We, you might remember, we like to keep our contract costs at around 2% if we can. So this contract came in, you know, below that, well below that. The, you'll see that the actual cost of living adjustments are 2.5, 2.75, and 2.75.
So it's just, it's a 1.46% increase over prior?
With givebacks on insurance and different things like that, increases there, I do an overall contract cost, and, and that's where we get that 2% goal.
Okay.
And our, and we've reached it with 1.46%.
Thank you.
And I don't know if it's Erica or Kathy, so, so the insurance premium changes, I know that we're offering an HSA plan, so how, and I don't know if those conversations have started, because I'm assuming open enrollment will be soon. How's the education or things going on with, with the?
A couple of weeks ago, I, I did a road show, if you will. We, we did about seven or eight-
How's the education or things going on with, with the?
Couple of weeks ago, I, I did a road show, if you will. We, we did about seven or eight presentations, and it did one week. Went to all roll calls, 7:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., 11:00 p.m. We did a night meeting on the second for all IBPO members, the police members, and their spouses, only one brought their spouse. I've had three sessions here in the town hall for people. I have the schedule of individual meetings, that people are coming to see me. Thursday night at the Yates Room, I'm having another open forum for people and their spouses, for all the rest, for everybody, anybody, but, you know, the union sponsored the last, you know, one for the police officers. But the education is going really well, I, I hope. I've got my fingers and toes crossed. I, I do think it's going well. You know, we've been meeting, we're setting up all the parameters of the program, the bank, we just met with people about that, and we're going to be ready to go for July 1.
Great, thank you.
We did one thing, and Erica did mention, which I was pleased about, was that the police union, and they were the first one, but they actually sponsored their own meeting too. And so that was kind of new, we were, we were happy about that. So Erica had met with the police union, and, and then we had a sponsored one, and then the police actually sponsored one. And there was a, a big showing for, you know, for the, their showing in the union, which is.
About 20, there's only 45 scoring.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
So I'm getting the sense that people either are embracing this or really just educating themselves for now?
I think both. I, I hope more of the former, you know, but, you know, is there going to be some people that just don't do it?